Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, April 3rd West Fargo City Commission Meeting. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without individual, that we do not withdraw.
Thank you, everyone. Next, we have the Order of the Agenda. I have two consent agenda items to add. One is a South Elementary PTA, and the other one is a fundraiser for the WDAY Honor Flight. And also, item number 10, it has been requested to pull that one. And those are all the changes I have.
Make a motion to...
Yes.
Before you approve, there's another item to add here. It's storm improvement district 4050. That would be on the consent agenda, just to approve the contract.
Okay, those are all the changes, then. Your motion?
All moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Building permits. If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve is written?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, we missed...
Those add-ons, yes.
We missed the item C, approve the minutes of the March 20th meeting. Thanks.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. I see that we have a scout in the audience today. Can you give us your name and what troop you're with? Okay, well, welcome. Okay, the regular agenda. Item number one, 5:30 public hearing and first reading ordinance number 1079 relating to annexation. Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the annexation for the Lower property pursuant to court order dated December 22nd of 2005. The property was to be annexed on certain conditions. This would be a change in ownership. The property has been sold, and the city has also received a petition for the improvements or for the annexation. And now the time is set for the public hearing and first reading.
Any questions of Sarah before I open the public hearing? Any questions of Sarah? If not, we'll open the public hearing. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? One more time, is there any public comment? If not, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the City Commission. Any questions, comments, Sarah, or otherwise do I hear a motion to put it on first reading?
Make a motion and put it on first reading.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item two, a public hearing and first reading for Eaglewood Sixth Edition replat and rezoning. Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We just... Lost my screen there. We received this application in order to accommodate the splitting of one large lot into a smaller lot for continued development of townhomes, and taking the western portion of that and creating 23 single-family, R1s and mixed one and two-family lots. The plat also includes a connection of the existing Fifth Street across an existing retention pond and over to Cheyenne Street, providing an additional means of access for this property, as well as future development to the south. The commission had previously approved a conditional use permit for developing these townhomes on the lot. That was a number of years ago. They have some of those buildings which are greater than eight-unit buildings that require a conditional use permit. Also, the commission may also remember considering the extension of Fifth Street at this point. That actually came through initially in a subdivision but was never considered as the improvement district failed at that time. The applicant now is wishing to pursue this along with the residential lots. They would pursue those residential lots regardless, but want to extend that road as part of this plat. They're also involved in the development of the lots to the south, kind of near the hockey rink, and this provides an additional extension out to Cheyenne Street for them. So they were interested in that. We, just today, and I don't know why I'm not able to pull up a lot of this stuff, but we did receive site plans that show that the new lot would be a conforming lot. That was one of the conditions noted in the staff report, so we're pretty confident in that. The proposed land use plan amendment to accommodate the single-family residential does not affect the ratios for preferred diversity of housing types in the section. Therefore, it would be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. At their March 13th meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing, reviewed the application, and are hereby forwarding their recommendation for approval with the recommended conditions as noted in the staff report. Applicant is here. There's a public hearing scheduled, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions of Tim? Any questions of Tim? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? One more time, is there any public comment? If not, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the City Commission. Any questions, comments? If not, do I hear a motion to put it...
I guess, I'm sorry, Mayor. I do have a question, and Chris, maybe you can help us. I know we talked about this a little bit. Tim, in reference to putting that traffic onto Cheyenne Street, has anybody... I mean, we didn't even kind of talk about it. I think we're going to pass this too quick, but my concern is adding additional traffic to Cheyenne Street. Now, is this something they want to do at this time, or are they planning to wait until we reconstruct to get the traffic onto Cheyenne Street?
Well, construction started in that section in 2018. I'm unsure what their development plans were when they planned to start building, but my guess would be... John, would you answer where you plan to start?
We're going to request improvements right away, but after talking with Dustin, it sounds like it'll probably be 2018 before that connection's in place, so it'd kind of line up timing-wise with those improvements along Cheyenne.
Okay, and I'm okay with that, as long as it is 2018. Just so you know that going into it, that would be my concern, that we had any additional traffic prior to that, because if we were to do this, we'd have to turn around and basically redo it again when we... So that would be a mute point with the money, the assessments on there, so...
Okay.
So you're under that?
Yep.
I guess I want to make sure. Do we all understand that? Dustin?
I'll add one comment to that is, one benefit, if we got started now, we could start building the base of the road and allow it and to get the soils to settle out, but not actually make the connection to Cheyenne Street until 2018. That would be...
Are you referring to the base, the going into Cheyenne, but not onto Cheyenne?
Right, so leaving that last segment out until...
Not allowing it onto Cheyenne. I'm fine with that. I don't have an issue with that.
I shouldn't say in 17, but just not allow the road to be open to Cheyenne.
Well, you pave it in 18. You construct the base, road base, let it settle for the year, get all the settlement out of it, and that'd make a much better road.
Okay, and John, is it the other question I have that I don't see addressed here is, what are you looking for there? What type of a intersection?
We talked about a three-quarters access. It wouldn't be a full. I mean, preventing the left turn onto Cheyenne, I think is...
So right out, right in, and then a left turn?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And the main point for us is to get another access point for our townhomes, then in addition, when the project to the south comes on, having more opportunities for people to access it is always better.
Okay, thank you.
We also, I did receive a comment from the chief over here, that he is also firing. Police are also in support of that.
One question for the record. I told him this, Vance, but I'd like to get on the record is, a lot of this is city property, but the city is not paying anything for the street. It's all going to be assessed to the townhouse properties or the privately-owned properties.
If you look at the assessment district, you can see that it doesn't include the area that would be...
Where's... What page is that on, Tina?
It showed us in the middle of the square.
I think we have it.
The one portion that would be likely assessed is the new lot that is created that the city would have the ability to sale, whether it's marketed. I'm not sure how the city would go about selling it, but that particular lot would probably have.
Or just at the side of that engine pond that's eliminated?
Yeah, just made it, yeah.
Built in and eliminated?
Right. The intent of the city right now, or at least talking with Tina, is that the city would lease that lot, or sell it, or work with the company for a swap of some sort of, but it's not the intent to maintain that lot as a city.
Dustin, how does that work with such a small area? How does that work with park dedication? Where does that even fall into play, or does it?
It's already been handled here. It's already been subdivided, so we've already done park dedication. It's a resubdivision, so they've already paid that.
Oh, so that's...
They don't have to do anything.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item three, Pro Sweep Lease Only Renaissance Zone Application. Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commission. Apologize, my PowerPoint's a little out of order here. New Star or North Star Safety was approved for Renaissance Zone last June and just completed their building. They now have a tenant that's looking for the lease-only portion of the Renaissance Zone. The Renaissance Zone approval is the same for a leased tenant as it is for the building itself. It doesn't involve the local property taxes, only for the income tax portion of a leased tenant. So Pro Sweep is a business that's owned by the same person who owns the building. As a part of the process, they need to get approved for both entities, one, the building, two, the business. And so the application in front of you is for the six employees in the Pro Sweep building, that's or business that's going to head into that building. As a reminder, it's on the corner of Seventh and Center. They built a 7,500-square-foot building. It's nearly completed today, and I don't have an updated picture for you. Or a PowerPoint. There we go. But this is just a real quick site plan we have. So building's nearly done. That part will be approved, our final approval here in the next couple of weeks, and now, before they can actually sign a lease with their separate business, they need to go through this process.
Any questions of Matt? And it was approved by the EDC.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yep. Did you draw that yourself, Matt, or...
You know, that is actually off of plan, and that's as good as I can get.
What are we looking at there, yeah?
That's brutal. Yeah, well, let me give you a tour. You know, the light part is the building footprint on the lot.
You can do better, man. No, no, I can't. I just...
The renderings were even worse, if that's even a possibility. But that's the building.
It's a nice-looking building.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, it is 3D.
If I had time, I'd go out and take a picture, but I ran out today.
Any questions of Matt?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item four, another Renaissance Zone project. This time it's Cheyenne Plaza. Matt.
All right, let's...
There's the nice drawing, Matt.
There you go. I'd have one of those for the last. So Cheyenne Plaza is in a similar situation. It's within the Renaissance Zone. Originally, they came before the Economic Development Advisory Committee last year sometime. They have 5,000 square feet of commercial property still to lease. The rest is full, and so they're not eligible for the property tax portion of the Renaissance Zone. Again, this is just for the income tax portion, and it's to help lure a prospective tenant into that last 5,000 square feet. The project as a whole has to be approved as a Renaissance Zone project before an individual leased tenant would come in and get approved as well. So the intention here is approve the building project as a Renaissance Zone project. The developer's not eligible really for any of the benefits, but if a leased tenant comes in later, then at least that step in the process is done. And with the current legislation floating about, there've been some projects that said we better, you know, get this done in advance in case something changes. So they are here.
With that legislation, on a quick note, hopefully they don't approve, but you never know. Would that be retroactive at all, do you think, or...
No.
Would it not be able to?
Yeah. There was originally a bill that was floated that would have some retroactive stuff in it, but that got stripped. And now, really, there's two bills that involve Renaissance Zone. One that was originated in the House, one that was originated in the Senate. From what I hear is they want one of them to go through, and so they're going to introduce the Senate bill, which only has some minor changes to the Renaissance Zone, including that you have to get approval from the school and the county in order to approve a Renaissance Zone, and see what the governor does with that. If the governor edos it, then they think they're going to send forth the House bill, which is virtually the same bill, but some additional changes to the Renaissance Zone, one being taking out the state portion and then calling it development zone. And they haven't finalized that bill yet either, so...
It'll be interesting to see what he does with it.
It will be very interesting, yep.
Any other questions of Matt? If not, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Excuse me. Item five, a conditional use permit for an illuminated sign in a residential district located at 2711 Seventh Street East, Holy Cross Catholic Church.
Yes, Your Honor, members of the commission, this is an application for along Blue Stem and Seventh Street East down south, and the church pretty much has the whole block, church and school. They're looking at placing the sign in the northeast corner of that property. It would include an illuminated message center, digital message center, as well as a sign identifying the church proper facilities. It is residentially zoned property, so any illuminated signs and signs over 32 square feet would require conditional use. They submitted an application and went to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, subject to some conditions, and since that time, they have provided a signed elevation plan, which is in your packet, showing the structure that they're proposing, and there's a site plan showing the orientation direction that is in there. There will be a conditional use permit agreement that's put in place and signed and recorded for this. I'd be open for any questions.
Any questions of Larry? Just for reference, Commissioner Thorsted is going to abstain from this vote. No questions of Larry. Do I hear a motion?
All moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item six, review the bid tab for Sidewalk Improvement District Number 6053. Dustin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission. This is a multi-use path project in the Wilds Second Edition, basically extending some connectivity from Ninth Street West over to 11th Street West. We had a lot of bidders, good bids. We decided to do something a little bit unique with this project and been an alternate for a different type of reinforcing to use what's called a fiber mesh. Reinforcing is basically little strands of fiber that is thrown in the concrete mix. This allows us not to have to put down the traditional steel. And actually, it came in just a few thousand dollars cheaper, so we are going to recommend awarding, using this technique and kind of use it as a trial run. It may become something of interest in the future. With that said, I would recommend awarding the contract to keep contracting their base bid plus alternate B, a price of $98,867.60. Engineer's estimate was $109,000.
Dustin, before you make that motion, have they used this elsewhere, this material?
Oh, yeah. It's been used. We haven't used it in West Fargo, but it has been used in a lot of private parking lots, recreational trails, bike paths in there. I've personally had experience with it, building a concrete canoe. So it does work. I've just, I've never used it enough.
I'd go.
Yeah, I'd go.
I didn't jump in. But so it's not a new technology. I just haven't used it on a municipal project before, and so we figured, you know, this is a relatively small stretch of what they use path, and why not give something a shot, let it go for a few years, and then if it's working well and it's actually coming in a little cheaper, I may use it a little more often in sidewalk projects. It will expedite the construction.
Explain it again. They don't use rebar, or what?
Right. So instead of putting down the traditional rebar mats, you actually just they're little fiber strands. They're about an inch and a half long. They look like a little kind of white fiber. I don't know what else to explain it, but it... So there's, they basically designed a mix, so so much of this fiber is introduced into the concrete as they're mixing it, and that is technically, it's reinforcing. So that fiber has that strength to transfer that loading.
What's the strength difference between the two?
Big question.
You know, the poundage between, like, say, right now, we see, you know, I see trucks driving down sidewalks. What's going to happen if a truck drives down this bike path, or as far as the, you know, strength, I guess, what's the...
Strength is supposed to be comparable. I'm not sure the exact numbers.
But comparable, okay.
It is comparable. They've used it in some municipal projects I'm aware of in other areas of the country, or things like permeable concrete. So they pour the concrete with the ability for that, for water to drain right through the concrete pavement. They'll use fiber reinforcing instead of the steel, because you're intentionally transmitting water through the concrete. You don't want the steel to get rusted out. So they use it in that. So it is of capable strength to handle traffic loading. I just, I don't know the direct relationship.
Do you think the difference in your estimate versus what the price came in, is the labor savings?
Yes.
Or is that what it...
Basically, our inexperience with estimating ultimately the cost would be for the fiber reinforcing, and I'm sure it's savings on labor.
As long as you don't take your canoe down it, I guess, we'll be okay.
I'll have to show you the pictures of that someday.
Your intention is to try this and wait a couple of years. You're not going to start doing a whole bunch of projects with this. You want to test it, make sure it works.
Yeah, this was a good, nice, continual, straight stretch of path. Yeah, before we introduce it to future sidewalk projects, I don't foresee us ever doing this on a big street, but certainly with sidewalks and paths, maybe it's something that we revisit with future sidewalk district as we do infills, and allow it as a lawful standard for residential construction as well.
Any other questions of Dustin? If not, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item seven, the review of the bid tab for Water Improvement District Number 1302.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission. This is the water tower recoding project. We brought before a couple samples of what we were going to go with in terms of coloring on the water tower. And bids were competitive. We have not worked with this particular low bidder before, plastic protective coatings, but we did do some research on them. I didn't include it in the packet, but I can bring it to a future meeting if the commission desires. With that said, at this point, we'll recommend awarding to plastic protective coatings in the amount of $935,535.
Any questions of Dustin? If not, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Number, item eight, review the bid tab for Sewer Water Starment Street Improvement District Number 1279, Phase 1.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. This project here is another phase of the 12th Avenue Reconstruction Project. The 12th Avenue project was bid with putting in a temporary gravel road off of 11th Avenue that is in the Midland Garage area, basically extending from where it ends today, about 200-foot stretch over to where the Pacers property is over there. The project consists of, instead of just leaving or taking the temporary gravel off, actually leaving the gravel there and then taking a step further and paving it with a concrete road, or extending this concrete road so that it provides access to the few properties that are adjacent to that area. The, and the bids were competitive. Came in right at our estimate, just by your under. The low bidder is Dirt Dynamics. Generally, we haven't dealt with them as a prime contractor, but they have been a sub to several of our projects, generally doing dirt work. But apparently, they have acquired some local concrete companies that we have worked with as well as subcontractors, so we're pretty confident they can do the job. At that point, I will recommend awarding this to Dirt Dynamics for their bid of $165,293.30.
Any questions of Dustin? If not, do I hear a motion to approve or not?
Dirt Dynam...
Do I hear a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further... Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item nine, review and discuss the emergency repairs needed at Meadow Ridge, at the Meadow Ridge Water Tower.
Mayor and Commissioners, this item's brought forward to you. Our maintenance crews are out looking at our water towers. We do on a regular basis. You can finish it up. And they noticed when they're in the Meadow Ridge Tower, a amount of water on the floor. So, they started doing some investigation and saw a slow leak. So, we were starting to proceed to go forward with some work on that basis. They exposed all the insulation. They exposed the piping, saw that the issues were much more persuasive throughout the entire area. There's a lot of the bolts and all that would have been rusted off. And so, the stand pipe is kind of sitting there on basically friction. So, we drained the water tower, and then we decided to come forward with this. We felt, I felt uncomfortable, Dustin felt uncomfortable about moving forward without a competitive bid. So, we're coming to ask for a frother rise, develop plans and specifications on an emergency basis and soliciting quotes. Available for any questions.
So, what does that mean, an emergency basis?
Basically, the century code does allow municipality to proceed with work without going through the traditional bidding method. So, basically, to forego the three weeks of advertising and directly hire a contractor to do the work. So, we would be within our right to simply work with the contractor of our choice, get this work done immediately. However, we would, we would still like to declare the emergency situation, but at least receive quotes so that we're at least in the comfort level of working with somebody within a reasonable range of price range. But if we, we need to declare this an emergency situation, we basically forego the three weeks of advertising.
What type, excuse me, a question. Why would it be any different than if we blow out a sewer pipe or something? Water pipe, you dig in the ground and you repair it. I mean, we're not replacing the water tower.
Well, we're replacing...
You're changing it out. We're fixing it, just like we're fixing a street or fixing a water pipe.
It's really the amount of work that we're going to be doing out there. It's, it's, our estimates are, you know, well over, you know, $30,000. So, what is the estimate right now we're looking at?
Well, at this point, we're certainly over 75. The last numbers you're starting to get, they're getting closer to 100,000. It's a $100,000 threshold that does require the full bidding process unless you declare an emergency.
So, we, we do have the time to actually, you know, we have, we don't have the three weeks to wait because we like to get it back in condition so we can have it come, come June when, when it starts to warm up. But I felt, we felt more comfortable moving forward, asking soliciting quotes so we could get that competitive pricing, make sure we have good prices.
I don't have a problem in an emergency. We've got to get it fixed. That's...
The difference would be...
$100,000 figure.
Right. And we have that capability to wait these, these couple of weeks. And so, if, if we needed the water right away, we'd probably be proceeding to get the work done without the emergency declaration.
So, are we going to be, you're going to be ready with numbers in two weeks then? Is it the plan, or are we going to proceed once you get those numbers?
I think we're going to be proceeding once we do get the numbers. So, we'll bring it forward to you, Commissioner Hanson, for your approval, and then we'll move it forward.
All right.
Is this affecting their water supply at all?
It is not. Our, our water usage is low enough right now that that tower isn't needed to supply the storage that we need.
I guess, my point is, is, you know, when you talk to the media, to make sure that they understand the definition of emergency, what we're referring to, the cost factor, not the health or the water supply. And because that can, I can already see people calling in saying, "My God, we got an emergency," or "Wendy, write in a great story."
Wendy's got it.
Oh, yeah. I know Wendy does. But they all, unfortunately, they all do not have it. So, like Wendy does. But be very cautious with that and make sure that we stress, you know, the difference because...
We're not short on, on storage, correct?
Right.
Yeah, that's a very good point to make. One of the nice advantages of the Meadow Ridge Tower, where it's at, it's near the pump station from the Fargo Supply System. So, that can, that can also supply the, the storage and the pressure right at that, at that point. So, it's, it's, that, that water tower is almost extra right now.
Is there any chance we can tell Fargo their water wrecked it?
They should pay for it?
That's right. Our old water would act like glue.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Tina?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. First of all, Chris informed me that Pearl Sweep, who you just approved, their Renaissance Zone is actually sweeping our streets right now, getting them all cleaned up for spring. The next thing is, Chris and I just started our thrilling diversion authority technical committee meetings today. They are Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. We both went today. I'll go tomorrow, and then he'll go Wednesday. It's going to be a big learning curve. There's lots to learn, but I think it's going to be very, very positive for the city of West Fargo in the end to be involved in that portion of it. There, I will be getting ahold of you, of you guys, to sit down and walk through with Dustin and Chris, master planning for the reconstruction of the older part of the community. We want to actually make a detailed plan that shows the best ways to go about it and which areas need what work. But we want to kind of talk it through with you guys first and make sure you're all on the same page with how we proceed with that. We are still working on the...
You proceed with what?
To proceed, oh, right now, what we're, what we want to do is talk with you about creating a master plan for the reconstruction for the, for the waters, sewers, streets, so forth in the older part of town. You know, right now, we're doing...
Oh, okay.
First street. And we wanted to kind of create a plan so that we have it laid out and we know the condition of every single area, and we can plan the funding. We can make really good decisions going forward so that we don't jump the gun on an area or miss an area that we should have done first. And so, we have, we have a scope. We want to sit down and just talk with you and kind of run through it. And I'll get you a copy of what we have so far, and then just sit down and talk with you and just make sure that we're all on board because this is going to be something that is going to affect a large part of the original community of West Fargo. So, it's really important to make the right decisions. So, that's kind of where we were at with that. We're still proceeding with trying to make decisions on the 40th Avenue project. It's, we got some reports back, and we'll be looking through those, and we'll keep you posted as we move forward on that. It hasn't been forgotten. I just wanted to remind you that we are still working on it. Planapalooza is coming up, April 20th through the 25th. So, that'll be, it will start the Thursday, or no, yes, the Thursday after your next commission meeting. There will be an opening presentation that evening, Thursday, the 20th, at 5:30. And from there, there will be a number of technical meetings on Friday, Saturday, and then Sunday, they'll do what they call the public pinup and review. That will be held at City Hall. And that will take all the information that they've gathered through the course of the time period and put it out for the public to, to review and, and make comment on. And then, there'll be another whole day of open studio, and then Thursday, or Tuesday, the 25th, is when they'll have their closing presentation and wrap it up. They plan on having their studio and City Hall open all day long from Friday to Monday evening and Tuesday morning. So, there'll be a lot of opportunity for the public to come in. Melissa's been doing a lot of work with Larry and Tim, trying to get the information out, trying to get people involved. We'll be sending out letters to different groups that we want to have involved in different contexts that all of us have, as, as department heads with the city, to try and get as many people as possible taking part in the different, different meetings. There's a number of technical meetings. There's services and facilities and infrastructure, parks, open spaces, sustainability, resiliency, housing and neighborhoods, parking, downtown revitalization and redevelopment, as well as many other topics. So, we're looking really forward to having them come up and to have that going on. As it goes forward, if you have more questions, don't be afraid to let Tim or Larry know or ask Melissa. They've been working really hard on it, so we're pretty excited for that to happen. The last thing I have is that Verna has begun training, the new Verna. His name is Brian. I don't know if you would remember him. He was a clerk at the police department, and he left here to go be, to work in the court system over in Fargo. And then, when he saw that this position opened up, he came back and applied. And he was very excited. He's been working towards this position. He's been very excited to do it. We're very excited to have him back. So, other than that, we're just moving forward. And do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? If not, thank you.
Yep.
Any other items? A reminder that there's a Board of Equalization meeting next Tuesday at 5:30, right here. Again, next Tuesday at 5:30. And if there's nothing else, do I hear a motion to adjourn? All moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, everyone.